I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Board meeting for August 19th, 2020. This is Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm going to call roll call for the Planning Board members. Alden Clark?
Here.
Beth Delisle is absent. Anne Gardner is absent. Is Tanya Hartford here yet? She'll be coming. Liam McGovern is absent. Rick Tainter?
Here.
MJ Verde?
Here.
Don Walters?
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. Our note taker is Linda Guthrie. We also have members of staff here, Director Andy Port and Planner Caitlin Sullivan. And I believe I saw zoning administrator Jennifer Blanchet. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Let me go through the agenda before we do anything else. Our first item of business is joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee and Committee of the Whole on short-term rental units. That's been continued several times. The most recent date you see on the screen is June 17th. We actually had a public hearing on a previous version of this these this amendment in in March. Other business, Minor Site Plan Review Zero Parker Street. It doesn't show up here, but it will be continued to September 2nd. Approval not required for 57 Low Street. Approval of the minutes from August 5th. A discussion about the Evergreen Pool. Potential zoning amendment discussions and other updates. At this point, I'd like to point out that as we have a virtual meeting and online, that materials are available on the website. Director Port will pull up and display documents as they're relevant. But if there's anything else that is listed on the agenda that anybody would like to access, you can go to the city website and under Government, click on Planning Board, where you will see a link to this agenda. And every item on there is then linked, excuse me, linked to relevant other supporting materials. And if there's more than one document for an item on the agenda, the most recent ones are at the bottom. So now I'll turn it over to Counselor Shand.
Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Bonnie. This is Counselor Shand. I'm head of Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. My other committee members are Counselor McCauley from Ward 5 and Counselor Wallace from Ward 4. We make up the Planning and Development Committee. We are here tonight to discuss Ordinance 046, the zoning amendment for short-term rental units. Just so folks appreciate, there is an additional amendment, Ordinance 047, that deals with short-term rental units that are the general, that is in the Licensing Commission Committee. And we will not be discussing rules tonight. We are just here to discuss the zoning updates. That's Ordinance 046. As Chair Sontag mentioned, that is in the link to the planning meeting tonight, so you can take a look at that. What I want to do tonight is to hand it over to Counselors McCauley and Counselor Tontar. They are the two sponsors for the amendment, I mean, for the zoning change. It was amended earlier this month, so the latest and greatest is part of the link tonight. After that, we will be doing public comments, and I will leave that to Chair Sontag and Andy Port to explain how that will be done on Zoom. So at this point in time, I would like to have Counselor McCauley, if you would, talk about the updates to the to the ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the Planning Board, Committee of Planning Development, members of the Planning Department, my co-sponsor, fellow counselors, and the general public. As we have said, this joint session is intended to continue our discussion on short-term rentals. Tonight, we'll focus on the zoning portion, the amendment. We've tried to incorporate previous public comment and inputs from the Planning Department, Planning Board, Fire Department, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Office as well. I'd like to give you an overview of the proposed amendment. But before I do that, I'd like to set or reset the context of this discussion. One of the main questions we get is, why are we reopening these discussions? Well, there's three reasons. First of all, we've we've had a a recent legal opinion from our city solicitor. We've always had a quirk in our zoning code. The language from decades ago has said, if a use is not listed in the code, it is not allowed. Our, over time, previous administrations have had differing interpretations of the intent. The recent legal opinion backed by precedents in land court confirms the interpretation, if it's not listed, it's not allowed. I say this because short-term rentals are not listed as a use in the zoning code. Technically, short-term rentals are not allowed in the city. This does not reflect the reality on the ground. So there is a bit of urgency to get short-term rentals listed as a use, and I think it's an important first step. Secondly, as we talk about the reality on the ground, we currently have a little over 200 short-term rentals in the city. About 90 of them are registered with the state. So we have short-term rentals operating in the city that are in non-compliance with city rules. We have over half of the short-term rentals that are not compliant with state law. So by setting requirements and guidelines, we make short-term rentals more transparent. And thirdly, we've had an uptick in neighborhood issues. We we see this as a outgrowth of the COVID issues where people are at home more. They notice more. They notice strangers in their neighborhood. In the past, we might have one to two party house incidents in a year. This year, we've already had over four. Most are anecdotal. Why? Because we don't have rules. We don't have guidelines to enforce. Again, these, most of these issues are for the licensing and enforcement component, which is not tonight, but I raise it to get your attention, to add to the urgency of your review and hopefully your approval tonight. With that as a backdrop, I'd like to talk about the ordinance before you. This this the this amendment allows short-term rentals as an accessory use subject to licensing. The purpose, there's three sections of this: the purpose, the outline, the the specific districts, and the detailed requirements. The purposes are three: to provide a clear and consistent process to which certain dwelling units may be registered within the city of Newburyport for accessory use; two, to incorporate responsibly the growth of the so-called home share industry into Newburyport's existing neighborhoods by striking a fair balance between the preservation of permanent housing, including affordable and moderately priced housing, and the flexibility required for the residents to benefit from this new industry; and thirdly, to ensure that potential negative impacts from short-term rental units, including, but not limited to, impacts on public health, fire and safety due to increased trash, noise, traffic, parking, etc., do not adversely impact the overall character of the neighborhood. In specific districts, we're permitted. We have shown permitted by right solely in accordance with the section that you'll see for your review tonight. And thirdly, there's detailed requirements, basically accessory use to 101, 102, and 103. So as you deliberate tonight, thank you for your considerations, and thank you for a review of this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Counselor Tontar, would you like to speak to this as well? Since you are.
Thank you. Just briefly, Counselor McCauley did a great job covering the territory. Guess what I'm doing is reiterating what he said. There is a there is a policy question that will come before the council. And that policy question is whether or not we wish to allow short-term rentals in the city. And both of us are certainly well aware of the fact that that is a contested question in the city with opinions from all directions. I think that the zoning, and we will have plenty of time, and I want to reiterate this as well. When the license ordinance goes before the License Committee of the Council, there will be public meetings and the opportunity once again to delve into the detail of that. Here, basically, what is before the board is the question, if we do license short-term rentals, where should they be allowed? I would just note that we did some small changes from the last time you saw this. The what's listed is C O N, or the Agricultural Conservation. Originally was allowable only with a special permit. Now you'll note that it's permitted, doesn't require a special permit process. Thinking there was that there was nothing unique about Conservation Agricultural District that would require a special permit. The other thing you will note is that the waterfront marine dependent zone was originally special permit, and that has been, we changed that to not permitted. The thinking there was, there was nothing inherent to short-term rentals that, you know, indicated they were waterfront marine dependent. So it was more appropriate not to do that. That's in Business 2, Business 3 district. We also specified that short-term rentals have to be above the first floor. They could not be on the floor level. And also that B 2, B 3, and anywhere, there would no be, there would not be any distinct signage or advertising. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Counselor Tontar. Chair Sontag, do you want to, I'll hand it over to you and Andy, and we can start public comment. You want to lay down the ground rules?
Sure. They're pretty standard for anybody who's been to any of our joint public hearings. When you speak, please state your name, your address, and speak obviously to the amendment that is on the floor for discussion tonight. And you will be limited to two minutes. Rick Tainter will be keeping time, and he will gently but firmly interrupt you if you go beyond your two minutes. Andy Port will be handling the technology side of it, so I'll let him explain how you, let him know that you're ready to speak.
Thank you, Chair. So for those who haven't used a Zoom meeting before, if you move your mouse to the bottom of the screen, you should see a little hand pop up, and that's the raise hand button. So anybody who's using the Zoom platform can simply click that button, and that will indicate to us with the hand that we see that you're interested in speaking, so then we can unmute you. We'll just go down the the name of list and attendees. For those folks who are calling in by phone only and they're not using a device screen of some type, you should be able to press star nine to do the same function to let us know that you'd like to raise your hand and speak. So I'll begin going down the list then. The first person we have from the audience is Tom Colterjohn.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Tom Colterjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The proposal before this joint committee is a concern to the trust. We believe it negatively impacts historic neighborhoods. Short-term rentals have already taken up much-needed rentals and whole houses needed by permanent residents. It absorbs affordable and moderately moderately priced housing, whether there is left of it. And I'm not talking about the official quote-unquote "affordable" housing, mind you. One of the stated purposes is to incorporate responsibly the growth of the so-called home share industry into Newburyport's existing neighborhoods. I am wondering why a business needs to be incorporated into a residential neighborhood. Only a few seem to benefit where the neighborhood has to put up with any negative consequences. I look forward to the discussion on enforcement. Lastly, I would encourage everyone to read and study the research and data compiled by Jane Snow. She sent it to the Planning Board members and the City Council, so it's now in the public record. My compliments to her for such thoughtful work. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Juliet Walker.
Good evening, Juliet Walker, 13 Eagle Street. I only have a few comments. I actually was surprised by how limited the zoning amendments are. I guess my, from my perspective, I feel like zoning should be the primary mechanism for regulating uses and that licensing should be the secondary mechanism. I'm sure you've had extensive conversations about this prior to this, and I unfortunately have not been able to participate in those conversations. But my my initial reaction on this whole approach, as I said, is I think zoning really should be the primary mechanism. It creates predictability for property owners to understand what is allowed. I believe licensing is a more complicated way to regulate use. Certainly, you can add conditions through licensing, but I think when you're talking about what what a neighborhood expectation is, I think zoning is the appropriate mechanism. I also am concerned about the lack, and maybe this is further defined in the licensing, but the lack of distinction between a whole-house rental and a partial-house rental where the properties are present when the Airbnb is being rented. If you've if you've addressed that in the licensing, I would encourage you to also address that through the zoning. And I do also want to encourage the Council and Planning Board members to remember that we are in a new era in terms of thinking about equity in our communities and the impact of limiting our housing supply and how that how that affects our equity. How the more we restrict availability of housing for long-term rentals, the more we are going to impact the overall inequities in our community. So I think it's really important, given recent developments, that we start to think about that. I know this probably came up prior to that. But I do think that the Council and Planning Board members really need to be thinking about the impact on our housing supply and that short-term rentals have. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, next we have Jane Snow.
Good evening. My name is Jane Snow, and I live at 9 Coffin Street. And I hope that you did get the paperwork that I sent you. I took some time and went through the listings online and compared them because I had started doing this in 2017. And I was able to show you the number of people, how it is increased in terms of, for instance, entire houses. There were 37 in 2017, and there's now 98 in 2020. So I do hope that's helpful to you and and helps. I I have a problem with the ordinance because I don't think it should be permitted in a residential area. When I looked at your descriptions for residential 1 and 2 and 3, it says uses which would not detract from the desired residential character. And I'm sorry, but I do feel these do detract from the residential character because, and again, I've looked this up with data, so many of them are not owner-occupied. A lot of them are owned by people who are out of state, and I did send you that breakdown, so you are aware. We have something like 200 people that have signed up on Airbnb online, and yet we have approximately 90 people who have paid the tax. And between 2017 and now, to my knowledge, the city has done nothing to remedy that problem. So my thought or suggestion was, if we are going to allow Airbnb, from the data that I had, they basically fall between Kent Street and the seawall. And so I would ask that we go through and just work with that group, the people that are in a business district, because it isn't legal for them to be in a residential district. Start the process there, work out the kinks with the company that you've hired, and then take that data and either add to it, change whatever, and move forward. It's easier to add places, residential areas, etc., than it is to subtract them once you've put them in. So I would ask that you consider that suggestion. And I really ask you very strongly, please do not put them in a residential area. They do very negatively impact a quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Susan Martenson.
Hello. Hi, I've been a long-term resident of Newburyport. I've spoken at one of these meetings before. I sent a letter. I'm a 13-year resident. I live on 151 Merrimack Street, and I own a property at 54 Washington Street in one of the prized historic neighborhoods that have been referred to. I am one of the taxpaying and registered owners of an Airbnb. I am all for regulations, and I'm all for equity in housing. And I just want to point out that, again, this myth of the, you know, I would like to point out that, you know, I have a five-star rating, all of, I'd like to, you know, of the reviews. I'm very, that I have not had one complaint in the years that I've owned this house. The street that I am on, in terms of this, you know, I just would like to kind of give a sense of the demographic of the neighborhood. There's a sober house also on this street. There are multiple rental apartments that also have single rooms rented within the same house. So I just feel like the, you know, this idea that this is sort of disturbing the neighborhood, or, you know, I feel like is untrue. I also, again, want to point out that it is bringing a lot of money to Newburyport. This brings in a lot of tourism and is a lot of publicity for Newburyport. It also provides a lot of housing for people in Newburyport who need transitional housing for whatever reason. And I'm all for regulation. I'm all for this, you know, for for open discussion about it. But I feel like this sort of black and white decision-making does not serve the residents who currently live in this community. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Stephanie Nikotich.
Hi, Andy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Stephanie Nikotich, 93 High Street. I am completely opposed to this proposed zoning amendment. Short-term rentals are both a transient occupancy and business use under zoning. Our current zoning does regulate transient occupancy uses. In residential districts, there is either no allowance for these uses or allowance is with a special permit. Business uses such as this are not allowed in residential districts. The proposed ordinance turns our zoning on its ear, allowing by right transient occupancy and businesses as long as they are called short-term rentals in every residential district. The proposed ordinance serves none of the purposes it expresses. Whatever the Planning Board recommends, I will submit written comment to the City Council. In the meantime, I wish the city administration would enforce current zoning. Short-term rentals are not allowed in residential areas unless with special permitting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Eric Goodness. And Eric, you'll need to mute yourself, unmute yourself on your end. Eric, we see your hand raised, but it looks like you're still muted on your end. Could take a pause there. Eric, are you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I became one of those people. Am I on face web? Sorry about that. So my name is Eric Goodness. I live at 189 191 High Street, and I do oppose this. I think there have been some very good points made by Ms. Walker, Ms. Snow, and Ms. Nikotich, and I want to support what they've said. I also wanted to bring up the points that this is an expansion of use without any requirement for these properties to address pre-existing non-conformities as one would do when they improve or expand use within their properties. Any type of thought that this is not a commercial endeavor within the city is mistaken. One only has to look at the commercial terms of insurance that are provided by some of these hosting platforms where the policy is to cover for commercial business liability and business income. I agree with Ms. Walker that it's contrary to the intent of the city to foster more affordable housing. I do believe it's detrimental to the neighborhoods. And I do believe that we should use existing zoning laws to enable this capability if we do ever. In terms of enabling something that's illegal at the state level, I mean, this is not, this is, this is a, this is not a use that's been extended that we're asking for. There is no risk of the city being looked at for regulatory taking. But I don't believe that the existing providers in the city can can take a lawsuit against the city for a pre-existing non-conformity that they have by right. And I just think this is detrimental to the city and to the historic neighborhoods. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the public who'd like to speak? Last chance, anyone? Okay, I'm not seeing any others, Chair.
Okay, Counselor Shand, do you want to invite any of the counselors? I'm sorry. Yes?
Sorry, Bonnie. It looks like, just a moment, we had Al Clifford raising his hand.
Okay, back to public comment.
Al, are you there? Al, you appear to be unmuted, but we can't hear you. Al, are you there? We're still not getting any audio from you, Al. It does look like you're unmuted on your end, but we can't seem to hear you. I'll give you another moment if you're able to identify yourself. Let us know that you have an audio connection. Not sure if that's going to work. I'm not seeing any changes, Chairs.
Okay, we'll close the public comment session for now. If he does come back on, but only Mr. Clifford, you can let him in at some point.
There appears to be another person with their hand raised.
Yeah, we just had another person raise their hand as well, James Goodheart.
All right, this will be the last one. Continue with public comment.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
James Goodheart, 56 Boardman, longtime resident. I can very simply just say I agree with the majority of the previous speakers.
In which way? Would you be more specific, please?
Yeah, I think it's a detriment to the fabric of the neighborhoods. So I'm really against the ordinance. And if I went through the ordinance, there would be a number of things that I'd be opposed to as well, but broadly, I'm against it.
Thank you. Andy, you want to try Mr. Clifford one more time?
Yeah, Al, are you able to speak to the board? I'm still not getting any audio from Al.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, bring it back in for discussion. And I'm going to ask Counselor Shand if you'd like to take comments from And I'm going to ask Councilor Shan if you'd like to take comments from the councillors first, or would you prefer that we have planning board members speak? And we can have this an open dialogue with the sponsors as well.
I think an open dialogue works best when we bring it back in, so let's do it that way. I don't think there are any other councillors who are looking to speak, so.
Okay, so I'll ask planning board members to please comment. And if you have any questions, the sponsors will be happy to speak to it. And those of us, Rick Tainter and I were on the, on the latest working group to craft at least the bones of this version of the amendment. So we may speak up as well. So I'd like the others of the planning board members to comment at this time. Who would like to go first?
Hey Bonnie, this is Don. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Let me just throw out one, one quick comment first, and perhaps I'll reserve several of the comments later. But I just wanted to ask the sponsors or anyone else for clarification. In the zoning, section 3E talks about excessive noise, et cetera. And so I'm just trying to understand why that section was inserted. I'm assuming perhaps it was for emphasis because ours, our general ordinance is under chapter 8 health and sanitation under article 5 have nuisances. And there it talks about no unnecessary emissions of noise, et cetera. So I was trying to understand if the zoning was, was intending to provide a higher standard that's currently in the general ordinance, chapter 8.
Councilor McCauley or Tontar, could you respond to that, please?
Yes, sure. It was not intended to be a higher standard, but it was to call out specifically what areas that we'd have emphasis on. One of the things that became apparent in public comment is that this, this zoning ordinance is directly tied hand in glove with the licensing agreement, with the licensing ordinance as well. The, the intent was to write zoning such that it is, it can be zoned as a permitted use subject to licensing, right? And the licensing rules are more detailed, more stringent. So from my perspective, I didn't, didn't see this as, to answer your question, Don, that this was calling out anything higher, but just laying out that these are things specific to the neighborhood that we see.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other planning board members would like to speak, who would like to speak now?
A general question is Alden Clark. I was, I was just wondering, given the, the information that's been stated earlier, if this amendment does not get added to the, does, what does that mean for the existing ones? Do they become illegal activities? And what is the plan going forward if that is the case?
Director Port, would you like to speak to that one?
Well, I, you know, as it was mentioned earlier by Councilor McCauley, the, we have a legal opinion from council indicating that as currently, they did provide some supplementary opinion to us, which is a little bit hard to elaborate on right now. It's a little complicated, but the bottom line is they did say that the case law that had been cited was relevant here and that short-term rental units are, for the larger, for the most part, not in allowed use in the city. As Jim had mentioned, there's a provision in the zoning that says that any use not listed is therefore prohibited. So that was essentially the logic that was followed, citing some case law where there was a similar analysis by the courts as to whether or not short-term rental units are residential in nature or quasi-commercial in nature. So yeah, there would be a gap there. I think, you know, the question there becomes, I think, and maybe to your point, is, is there a wholesale effort to shut down all short-term rentals in the city simultaneously? Or is there a slow, you know, flurry of requests coming into the office to the zoning administrator, asking for the zoning administrator to shut down uses, short-term rental units around the city that are not allowed because of that blanket statement and blanket case law?
Okay, thanks. And is there a difference between the ones that are registered as opposed to the ones that are not registered?
Well, they, you mean with the state, they have to be registered. Is that what you're referring to?
Right, right.
The question here, I mean, they all have to be registered per the state. The question here, I guess, is what are the local requirements for obtaining a license? Unless I'm missing the question. I don't know if Jim wants to elaborate or speak to that.
Well, my, my co-council has his hand up and co-sponsor has his hand up. And I, I think we should recognize Charlie as well.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to respond to Don's question. And, and, you know, if you, if you look at the ordinance, the license ordinance, we do have a process where there'd be complaints. And, and if, you know, for instance, if there weren't three complaints on any of the, you know, noise ordinance or parking, then the license would be revoked. So as, as I think Councilor McCauley articulated earlier, the reason it's in here in the zoning is because we wanted that parallel to exist between zoning and, and our licensing, so that we could act to put some teeth in. And I think, you know, when I think of the circumstance in the city to, to Alden's question, it's, you know, it's not only here, but all over the country, short-term rental environment is being referred to as the Wild West. So there, there are a lot of communities where, yeah, people are ignoring the law. The, the communities are not forcing. It's difficult to enforce, not necessarily a source of revenue to enforce it. And I think Councilor McCauley and I try to thread the needle a little bit here. We're trying to, to deal with, with a new use. And, and trying to create a framework in which this, we could get some control over it. And I just wanted to note, for those who haven't had an opportunity to take a look at the, at the license ordinance, we are not going to allow so-called, what other people have called investor short-term rentals. So a building that is used just for a short-term rental in our proposal would not be allowed, first of all. Secondly, we would, we would also have the revenue to, to enforce that. And, and, you know, framework to, to enforce that. So we think, you know, that, that this would be in that addition. This, this would give us more power. Now, whether or not we, there's a will to, to address the Wild West aspect of that, we'll have to go forward on that. If we don't pass anything, they're outlawed, and will people continue to break the law? And then do you just wait till someone complains, complains and that sort of thing? I don't, the state, I don't, I haven't noticed the state doing anything to try to enforce the, the collection, right, of their tax. But maybe they will in the future.
Thank you, Councilor Tontar. I see Councilor Igerman has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. It's committee of the whole, just for the public notice. I'm not a member of the Committee on Planning and Development. And I, I helped write as an amanuensis these ordinances, but I'm not a sponsor. But I have been tracking this for many years, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of things so that everyone's on the same page. If we do nothing, the status quo is that every single one of these short-term rental units is illegal. Again, let me make that clear. Say it again. If we do nothing, they remain illegal. That's what, that's what it is. So now, then it's up to the zoning enforcement officer to do something about that. And that can be driven by complaints, and that's what the planning director Port was talking about. But if we do nothing, that means these built, these operations are just operating illegally. With, you know, it's not just that they're not regulated sufficiently, it's they're illegal. So, you know, you wouldn't really be able, for a good bank, they wouldn't be able to lend you money. You know, you wouldn't be able to get insurance, things like that. And then I do want to recognize the balance. We're only talking about zoning tonight. But Juliet Walker raised, you know, in her, her experience, you might want to take more of what was in the licensing ordinance, which is not before this body, this joint body, and put it in the zoning. I can understand that. But, you know, that's a policy call. So I guess what prompted me to raise my hand was, was Don Walters' question of, you know, why, for example, call out noise, fumes, odor, dust here in the zoning ordinance? And the reason being is because the general ordinance is not enforced by the zoning enforcement officer. But this would be. So it adds belt and suspenders. It's two ways to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that one out. That's a good, good call there. Are there other questions from the zoning for the planning board?
This is Tanya Hartford. I have, can you guys hear me okay? We're good? Yes. I, I think from, you know, and whether we, whether the city council allows short-term rentals, I think that's a policy question. I think personally, I see there's some value to short-term rentals. I know I use short-term rentals. I know they're a good economic development tool. And especially in the fact that we don't have hotels here. So I think that a lot of hotels, we do have some, we do have some pins. But sometimes it's sort of a way for owner, homeowners to not only help pay their mortgage, but then also they could be ambassadors for the, for the city and help our local businesses. So I think in those aspects, I've seen short-term rentals actually have positive impacts on communities. And when I was working for the state and I was traveling, I would stay in Airbnbs for that reason, so that I could rent a room, replace in Holyoke, and learn more about that city or town that I was staying in. So that being said, on this zoning amendment that's before us, I don't have a problem with, with the specific districts where it's permitted. I did have a question about why it wasn't permitted in WMD, but Charlie Tontar had asked that, so I'm okay with that. I probably would advocate to, to actually slim this down a little bit and have more information or more of the regulatory piece in the, in the license agreement. And I know Councilor Igerman sort of had that counterpoint, which is, which is also valid, but I probably would. But I know that zoning sometimes is more difficult to change, I would think. So, so I think that you want whatever, wherever there's a more fluid document, that's what you want to be easily changed. So whatever would be more easily changed is where you want more of your regulations, I guess is what I'm saying. Then the requirements, I would, I would take out A, and I would have those regulations be within the license requirement so that, so that that piece of it would be within whatever license requirements are for how many days they can rent. And maybe that's because we want to change that easily without having to go to city council. I would probably, and then I would add, I would make F as A, and I would take out, I would take out E under the requirements. And then the rest of it, I'm, I'm okay with. So that's all I have for comments.
I see Councilor Wallace has her hand up.
Sure, thank you. Just a couple questions, comments. Where does this stand, the licensing piece of it? Has this been reviewed yet? Or is there a date set where that part will be reviewed? That's, I guess, a question for Councilor McCauley or Tontar.
Well, I can actually speak to that one as well. I talked to Councilor Devlin this afternoon. He is waiting until sometime in September when we can have in public meetings to discuss the licensing aspects of this.
Okay, so that, that's, that's a little bit of a ways off. Yeah, I guess I wouldn't feel comfortable approving this until we can also have that discussion in licensing. Because I, I do agree with Juliet Walker a little bit. I thought some of that could go into the zoning, but it sounds like there's differences of opinion. So I think it's, it's important to have that reviewed before we approve anything here. It's just, just my thought. And the other comment or question I have is regarding the half-year residency requirement. I mean, I think the big thing is going to be who's, who's allowed and who's not. I know Jane Snow had, had provided some information. Do we know, if we pass this, how many would just not be eligible at all? I guess that would be the, do we know how many are just renting them out as, you know, they don't, they don't live there? And then my other question is, how does that apply to Plum Island? And, and how do you describe the discrepancy between the, between who's in and who's out? I mean, that's a question for Councilor McCauley.
Yes, so if I may, so Plum Island, we've treated as a separate entity right now because of the environment that's out there, the long history and so forth. And so we've, we've, at this point, that's the way we've done it, and we've tried to clear, clean that out. I think a lot of the questions that you have, councillor, are directly tied to the licensing portion of it. Tanya was correct. I think we chose the avenue of a document and a board that is easier to adjust in licensing. So if things need to be tighter or looser, as the case may be, we could adjust that from a licensing standpoint as opposed to a pure zoning position. I think what these, you know, this zoning amendment and the licensing amendment, I'll say again, go hand in glove. Any, any, any use in terms of short-term rental that would be allowed or not allowed here under these regulations are subject to licensing. And I know we're not talking about that, but many of the questions you ask and others have asked about what we can and can't do. For example, I'll use the example again of Juliet Walker about distinction of a, a whole house and a partial house. Those are clearly laid out in, in licensing. Residential, the six-month is consistent, the six-month residency is consistent with Massachusetts state law. The, yes, we know how many people are, how many folks that are registered and not registered with the state. For the most part, we have a good idea how many people may or may not be affected by this. But, you know, that's only affecting short-term rental, right? There's the ability to do long-term rental or do other things along the way. So again, as my co-sponsor had pointed out, we're, we're trying to strike this balance here of increasing availability of housing. I didn't say affordable housing, availability of housing in our housing stock. And we, we have as much public comment from the last, the first meeting we had, where longtime renters were put out on the street because we had five incidents of it, and they came forward, where they were put out on the street because the landlord was going to do short-term rentals. So these are the types of, this is the type of balance that we need to strike, and we're trying to strike. And we chose the avenue of doing a licensing portion of that with more of the belt and suspenders and details and operational expertise in that area. Meaning, you know, there's enforcement, there's penalties, there's registration process, there's conform to fire code and building code and those types of things that, that are laid out there. So I hope I answered your question. I know I rambled a bit, so.
No, that's fine.
Did I just, Councilor Wallace also asked about Plum Island. And Plum Island is largely exempt. They would have to register, but they're exempt. You know, they can, they can do short-term rentals 365 days, for instance, and that sort of thing.
They're exempt from the residential requirement, yeah, the primary residence requirement.
Right.
Could you speak a little bit more as to, as to why there's the exception with Plum Island?
Excuse me, we're, excuse me, everybody. I think we're getting into the licensing issues, and I'd like to bring us back to zoning. Would that be appropriate, Councilor McCauley? Or do you want to answer Alden's question?
It's up to you as the chair. I will do whatever you decide.
It's up, it's up to you as the chair. I will do whatever you decide.
Okay, I just wanted to help us stay on track. And Plum Island is not covered by the zoning here, so I'd like to defer that, those questions in consideration of the answers to the, to the licensing discussion. And bring it back to anything that relates to what's in the zoning here that raises questions for board members and counselors, if you don't mind. Rick Tantor?
Yeah, I was, I was holding off because I was involved in the working group, and I wanted to have other planning board members have an opportunity to talk. But I have a, a number of concerns, and I, I do think it's hard to separate the licensing from the zoning, but I will try to do that. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Jane Snow. That was a great research project she did, and I think it will be very helpful in moving forward. I think in terms of the zoning, there are a couple of things I have concerns about. One is there are really three separate uses here. The, the limited share, the home share, and the owner adjacent really have very different impacts. And I think that they really should be treated differently. So I would, and I would repeat what I had said before, that I think they should be separately listed in the, in the use table. And I also think it would be helpful, and I know there was a pushback against this when I said it before, but I, I still think it would be helpful to put these in the use table. And we already have six to eight accessory uses in the use table in section 5E. And this would just be another one, another set of accessory uses. And the reason I say that is it would make it much easier to compare other, other residential uses or business uses to what we're proposing. And as a case in point, the short-term rental unit proposal says it would be not permitted in B1. And among the short-term rental options is a limited share unit, which is like a small bed and breakfast. So you would not be allowed to have a three-room rental in the B1 district, which is a short-term rental unit. But you would be allowed by special permit to have a five-room bed and breakfast. And there really is no distinction between a bed and breakfast and a limited share unit. The, our definition of bed and breakfast in the zoning ordinance doesn't require that you serve breakfast. It's called a bed and breakfast, but all it requires is that you can rent up to five rooms. So I, I think there's a little bit of a, an inconsistency there, where right now you can't rent up to three rooms, but you can rent up to five rooms in, in the B1 district. And there, I think there are other situations like that, too. So I, I do think it's, it would be helpful to regulate these differently, to be a little bit more specific in the zoning ordinance, and to put the use table for the short-term rental units with the other accessory uses, which, and these include home occupations, outdoor cafes, drive-throughs, in-law apartments, accessory retail, and construction trailers. Those are all accessory uses that are listed in the, in the use table. So my suggestion, again, is to define short-term rental unit as, as a new use 111, with subuses 11A, 11B, and 11C for this, for the different ones. There's, there's a, an inconsistency in, between the proposed ordinance and state law. It's actually an inconsistency between our existing zoning ordinance and state law. Our zoning ordinance says that a lodging house means renting to five or more persons. The proposed short-term rental general ordinance, which translates back to the zoning ordinance, sort of mirrors this with different language. Instead of saying five or more, it says more than, more than four. But according to state law, which is referenced by the general ordinance, a lodging house is four or more persons. So certainly the proposed short-term rental units ordinances should be consistent with the, the general laws. And eventually, when we do the, when we upgrade the zoning ordinance to the complete zoning ordinance revision, we should bring that into, into compliance with state law to be consistent. And then that brings up another issue, which is that normally, when you have two conflicting regulations, the stricter one applies. Or two inconsistent regulations, the stricter one applies. And so the use table for use number 106, which is lodging house, is stricter than the proposed use table for short-term rental units. And the ordinance envisions lodging, short-term rental units as being subject to state law requiring, regulating lodging houses. So I think that although it says P for a number of districts in the proposed use table, many of those would be not permitted because they would be considered under state law lodging houses. Anything that requires sprinkling would not be permitted in some of these districts. So again, it's, it's important. I understand that the, the desire to put things in the, in the licensing ordinance and the general ordinance. But there's a reason why uses are regulated under zoning. And I think that where you, where you regulate uses, you should put it in the zoning ordinance, so you understand where your conflicts are with your existing ordinances. And I guess the final thing I would say is simply that I think we really have, well, two, two more things. One is that we really have four types rather than three types. We define three types, and then we treat Plum Island and houseboats differently. So I think there's a, there is a investor-owned short-term rental unit use that could probably be called out, and that would make it clear what you're trying to do in Plum Island. And, and the final thing is to point out that there are likely a number of short-term rental units on Plum Island that we haven't even captured yet, because they're not listed on Airbnb. I mean, the historic way you did short-term rentals on, on a beach community was you went to a local rental agent, and that person knew who was renting stuff and, and, and didn't, didn't have a computerized platform to work from. So, you know, Airbnb is just one of at least three of these computerized platforms. And there are probably other units on Plum Island that are not even covered by any of those listings. So the, the, the current situation is probably significantly larger than what, what, actually what Jane has the numbers for. That's all.
Thank you. Any other planning board members want to speak at this time? I'll just comment.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Who was that?
On, but you know, you please go first. That's okay.
Oh, I was just going to comment that I felt that many of the people who spoke tonight possibly hadn't read the licensing agreement. I mean, I'm sorry, licensing ordinance, because tonight is just focused on the zoning. And I think if they do, this kind of reinforces what Council McCauley was saying earlier, that we have tried, they have tried to take into consideration resident, what's considered or looks like a business use in a residential neighborhood for those particular concerns with owner occupied, owner on site, or owner designated operator available 24/7 to manage the short-term rental unit. And so the idea that we are permitting short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods is predicated on the fact that the licensing ordinance goes hand in glove with the zoning ordinance. Now, whether or not some of that should come into the zoning ordinance, as members of the board have pointed out, that's still open for discussion. But I would encourage all, everybody on this, on this hearing tonight to review both ordinances together, to see if the same concerns are as serious or even possibly some of them go away because of what the licensing will do to control some of the perceived and some of the very real situations that have developed so far. We have a, they have incorporated in there a disciplinary process and even an upper, an opportunity to withdraw or cancel the agreement. So in terms of where we have these uses, they cannot be viewed without looking at the licensing that controls that use. So I just wanted to reinforce that. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you. I've got a question to, well, to anyone, but perhaps specifically to the members of the planning board and city council that worked so hard and diligently in drafting up the, these two ordinances. And my question is on the zoning ordinance. Was there any discussion regarding insertion of parking into the zoning as compared to the licensing? You know, I've heard hand in glove, I heard parallel before. So I was just curious, when this is being drafted, was there any type of discussion on that topic? Thank you.
Council McCauley?
I thought he was asking for the planning board, and I'll take a pass at this. Yes, there was talk, in the licensing part, we have parking requirements that are there. And we went around a bit because there are no, there are inconsistent parking requirement in the zoning code for different areas. So there are different areas, there are different parking requirements on, in, from different wards and from different areas of the city. And it was, it started to become very, very complicated in terms of aligning parking zoning and versus licensing and tying it to the unit.
And I'll also speak to that, because I know I was quite concerned about it. And there is only one comment or space in the licensing ordinance that speaks to it. And it just says, off-street, on or off-site parking areas to accommodate all uses of the property, including the proposed short-term rental unit. So it's a blanket statement to Council McCauley's point. But it needs to be off-site, either on, off-street, I'm sorry, off-street, either on the site or arranged for somewhere else. Because our bottom line was, we didn't want to overload the neighborhood with more cars than would normally be there if the short-term rental units or unit were not in operation. But to your point, Don, about putting in the, in the zoning, we did not put it in there. And that was further elucidated by Council McCauley.
Thank you both.
I see Council Wallace has her hand up, as does Council Igerman. So, Council Wallace?
Sure, I just wanted to clarify. I agree with Council McCauley. We want to keep, you know, the zoning lean and put a lot of it into the, into the licensing piece. But I also agree with Rick Tantor, because I think what you just want to make sure you have right is the uses, like who's in and who's out, and make sure that that's pretty clear. So I don't have specific examples, but if this does get continued, I'd be happy to provide some written comments to the sponsors just on a couple of things that, that could possibly move between the two documents. Thank you.
Council Igerman?
Yes, thank you. Well, I, I think that the interplay between the zoning and the general law ordinance, maybe hand in glove is not the right metaphor we should use, because I would say the zoning is more like the bedrock, the foundation, the, the sort of, the basics. And so appropriately, it will be approved by two-thirds supermajority. Because in discussions with Craig Holt, especially on that task force, when we were trying to get the wording right on both ordinances, you know, he made pretty clear that a gating, a gating point for, for his licensing board is, does it comply with the zoning? So as a practical matter, the first thing that a homeowner would have to do, and again, it's supposed to be a homeowner, is make sure that they comply with the zoning, even before they bother with the much longer licensing ordinance. So in my mind, I, I am looking at the, at the zoning ordinance as the bedrock, you know, the first thing, what are the fundamental policy issues that have to be dealt with there? And then when we, when we drafted this thing, we made judgment calls on that for the sponsors, McCauley and Tontar. So there were some things that could have gone in one or the other, but, but we decided they go here. And so focusing on the second, first of all, it's where do you allow it? And then I think the disagreement we're having with Planning Board member Tontar is, in his mind, you know, he's ready to slice up short-term rentals into three, four, or more distinct uses that have to be addressed in the zoning code. But the way we looked at it is they were all short-term rental units. And those lines, as the Supreme Court famously said, you have to draw the line somewhere. You know, that's, that's a judgment call. There's no objective standard of when one use ends and one's another. You know, just to editorialize, again, I'm not a sponsor, I can see the argument for why a home share short-term rental is fundamentally different than the other kind, because the proprietor is not physically there. And we can, you know, we deal with that in the licensing ordinance, but I can see an argument for that, that in the use tables, there are some zones of the city where you don't want to have absentee renting, like we got the example of 54 Washington Street. You know, if that were the primary residence. But I don't personally think that you would have to slice limited time share, limited share where you live in the same, you're living there and you're sleeping there and you rent out a room to, say, a two-family house where you live next door to the unit that's rented out. I don't really think those are different to a level you need to deal with on the zoning code. And I think those are policy decisions. And so we need recommendations from your planning board and your committee, and then it'll come to the council and we will draw the line. I'd say the best point that was made about the use table and the interplay, Rick Tantor brought up was bed and breakfast in the B1. You know, we had had a discussion at the task force, well, you know, B1 is our car-oriented commercial zone, as much as it pains city planners. We do have a very significant car-oriented business district on Story Avenue. We have another one by Route 1 traffic circle at the train station, but we at least have a, an overlay for, you know, smart growth. Anyway, so that probably is a good catch that we have to sort of figure out as a policy basis. Do we want to allow BnBs at all in B1? We probably do. And if we do, do we care if they're two bedrooms or one bedroom or five bedrooms? You know, that, that's a good catch. One thing that I think is a red herring, though, is the lodging house. I think Rick was talking about, you know, does the more specific control, blah, blah, blah. But no, we, we, we captured that in the licensing ordinance. We're not changing existing law. And we had heard deep concerns from the Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Chief, Steve Bradbury is the one who actually has to inspect these places, that, you know, we, we have to make sure that we're complying with state law and lodging houses. So all we did was just repeat what it says. And if it's wrong in our current code, we better fix our current code. But it has nothing to do with the, with the Airbnb or the short-term rental. We have this longstanding ordinance on lodging houses. And it's not an accident that we, the use table on page one of this ordinance may allow a short-term rental unit in a certain district where a lodging, where a lodging house is not. That, that's not an accident. That was on purpose. A lodging house is, could be a subset of a short-term rental. So that was on purpose. Parking. Yeah, we deliberately left that to the ordinance, to the licensing ordinance. The, the authors wanted to do that, and that's the way we wrote it. Because, you know, the zoning enforcement officer, it was decided was not the right person to deal with it, that the, the person to sort of differentiate between the parking requirements for your average everyday house, say, in the South End in Ward 2, and your average everyday house in the South End when the homeowner is gone for a couple of months and rents it out on a rotating basis, those parking needs, we decided probably were in reality different, but that they were something that would be handled by the licensing board. And we wanted it easy for the licensing board to pull their license if the operator is, is really oppressive to its neighbors. really oppressive to its neighbors on parking. That was the decision, that we didn't want it to be handled in the zoning table. And then that leads to finally, the sort of, I mean, it's very much inside baseball, but, you know, do you put accessory uses in the use table or not? Like, I can tell you, the reason I drafted it this way is, when you put it in the use table, first of all, it is true that our current use table is a mess. And we have many accessory uses in there. But in doing the rewrite, which may never happen in my lifetime, but if it does, the idea was to get the accessory uses out of our use table and have them handled separately in the code. So we're trying to not compound that and make it worse. But also, once you put something in the use table, there's a cascade effect, which again, is not, you know, it's inside baseball, it's a concern for the city council, but it costs us more money because we have to amend more portions of the zoning code to make it conform. You have to add a definition section, you have to, it's just a drafting mess. That's why we didn't do it that way. The last thing I wanted to say is, you know, again, back to, what are the fundamental things in this two-page zoning ordinance that you should focus on? And I don't mean to be argumentative, but I think actually the Plum Island overlay district exception is in this zoning ordinance and is sort of, we thought, fundamental, that there's Plum Island, and then there's the rest of the city. And so one of the planning board members was asking about that. And that was based on, at least those of us on the task force, and I know on the city council, our historical viewpoint of Plum Island. And so Rick Tainer gave the example that before there was ever Airbnb, you know, there were local business people you could go to on State Street or Pleasant Street, and they'd say, yeah, I can get you a place to rent for a week on Plum Island. And that continues. And no, we're very conscious of that. And we are, they are captured in the licensing ordinance. You don't have to be registered on Airbnb to be a short-term rental. And again, the policy decision, which is up for debate in this zoning ordinance, is that on Plum Island, it does not, you can be in the business of renting out houses. You could own, you know, four cottages, we used to call them, whatever they are now, and not live in any of them. But you can't do that on the mainland. So that is sort of fundamental. And, you know, with that, again, I, oh, I want to recognize also, again, the policy issues. Absolutely, the more that you have enabled transient short-term occupancy, whether the person's living there and is able to police the guest, or is out of town all summer and rents it on a rotating basis and is never there, that's, you know, that is going to have an impact on the supply of long-term housing, no question about it. Now, would that long-term housing be cheap? Probably not. But it would be a different group of people. It would be people that, you know, live in the community. And if we weren't a desirable tourist town, the market would take care of it. Nobody would want to come and rent it on a short term. So we're not dodging that at all. That has to be addressed. Where do we follow in that? And the sponsors, as they told you, are trying to strike a balance. They're not trying to see it in black and white. It's not, it's not black or white, it's gray. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
All right, Bonnie?
So, planning board members, we have two completely opposite opinions, along with other people who fall somewhere in the middle, with Tanya going to slimming down the ordinance and making suggestions there, and Rick looking to increase some other sections such as use in the use table. We're not anywhere near an agreement on this. I think we need further discussion.
Hey, Bonnie, this is Tanya. I will say that I don't have a problem with keeping this as it's written. I was just, I think from my perspective, it's more, if in Section A, like I understand that that's where you have the Plum Island overlay district information in there, that wasn't what I was more, I was more thinking if we wanted to change the 183 days to, I don't know, if there was some, if there was something we wanted to change, I was trying to say, is there a way to slim it down so that that way, when we made the change, it didn't have to go back to the city council with two-thirds vote? And I mean, it's a process where if you had your regulatory pieces within your licensing agreement, it might be easier for you to put more teeth on it if you felt like you needed more teeth in a licensing agreement in this ordinance. And that was more what I was saying, is trying to say, okay, let's allow them, but then let's, let's allow the licensing agreement to be a little bit more fluid as we sort of work out some of these things. So that was more what I was saying. And I would be, I would be okay with keeping, I would be okay with recommending this ordinance as it's written.
Okay. Just to use your one example, that language is directly taken from the licensing agreement. So if there were an interest from the licensing side to change it, it would automatically change here. Now, if we found, from a use point of view, if we were getting, I mean, I think all of the complaints would come through the licensing process. And so they would be dealing with an issue that they might say, we need to change the number of days. And then they, they would be initiating it, and we would be part of that process. So I don't think it would be that, I don't think it would come from us necessarily. And I think we might be driven by the licensing process to make that change that would then be approved as a change in both amendments. But I think the bigger issue is around Rick's current concerns, and I'm going to bring it back to you, Rick, on differentiating the subcategories of use. Given what you've heard since you made your comments, do you have any amendments to your comments, or direction you want to go with it?
I still have the same concerns. You know, I, just to be very, I think that, I think that because we're not being precise in the zoning ordinance, we're being very general, we're opening ourselves up to lots of interpretation and potential conflicts. And again, they're just, the first one that I have thought about is, or there are two things. What is, what is the difference between a B&B and a limited-share rental unit? But just the idea of, because in the licensing agreement, we specifically reference the state law regarding lodging houses, that just opens up the potential for a short-term rental unit to be a lodging house. So that, the way I interpret this is when a, and we can probably solve it by some zoning language, but we don't have it yet. But if a short-term rental unit, whether it is a home share, or a limited share, or a, the owner-adjacent unit, if any of those have, can be rented to four or five, depending on how you interpret the ordinance and the law, four or five people not related to the owner, then they automatically become, it seems, under our zoning definition, they become a lodging house, and therefore are prohibited everywhere except for the R3, B1, B2, and B3 districts, which is in conflict with what we have in the zone, in our proposed zoning ordinance here, which allows them by right throughout the city, pretty much. So, so I just, I think that we need to be more careful about this. There are, it seems that there are, that we're not solving the problem that we're trying to solve. We're just, we're just creating some ambiguities and conflicts within the zoning ordinance. So, so I, I just think it needs some more work in that regard.
That is possible. It's not specified in the zoning, but if you look at the licensing agreement, it says no more than four unrelated occupants without a license, without a lodging house license. So if I remember our discussions and what I've seen that came out of it, we are staying under the minimum for a lodging house with all of our definitions of short-term rental units. And I thought that was meant to take care of your problem.
Except that a, except that a, certain units can have, the limited-share unit, I believe it is.
Madam Chair?
Let me just finish this. The limited-share unit is, can have a maximum of six guests. So that's a lodging house.
But they're in a configuration, oh, I see what you mean. Regardless of whether they're related to each other or not.
They could be, they could be all members of a family, but if they're not related to the owner within the second degree of kindred, then they're, then it becomes a lodging house.
Councilor Igerman, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I think, I think what Rick is missing is that the way that a lawyer or a judge looks at it is, you have to comply with everything. You can't pick and choose what you comply with. So as I was trying to say, very deliberately, we said, the short-term rental unit could also be a lodging house. So you can't say, oh, I'm deciding to be a short-term rental unit, I'm going to pretend that I'm not a lodging house, even though I'm both. It doesn't work that way. A court is going to enforce both. They're going to say, you must comply with everything. So if you are both a lodging house and a short-term rental, you have to comply with all the regulations for both. So if it's, if it says, well, you can do a short-term rental in Zone R1, but you can't do a lodging house, and you're both, you can't do it. So there's no, there is no circumstance where a short-term rental unit that's also a lodging house will be able to get out of the regulations for a lodging house. So there's no contradiction.
So, so what you're saying then is, a short-term rental unit in certain residential districts, even though it says they can have three bedrooms and six residents, they really can only have two bedrooms and, you know, and no more than three residents, three guests?
If they're a lodging house, and again, the definition of a lodging house is set by state law, it could change, it's incorporated by reference. So we're saying, you know, whatever the rules are for lodging house, you got to observe those. We're setting rules for short-term rentals if they're not lodging houses. The difference is degree of kindred, which is a very bizarre phrase, but, you know, with your related. And, you know, that's a creature of state law. And we've always had that problem under our zoning code. There are other situations where the exact same set of facts have arisen that you're describing, where something could be people sharing an apartment to reduce expenses. And there's lots of litigation on this. And the owner says, see, it's not a lodging house. And the court says, no, you're both. You're a lodging house. And they have to comply with all the regulations that apply to both. This is no different. In other words, you're stuck with lodging house. You can't, it's preempted by state law. There's nothing we can do about it.
I guess, I guess my concern is, and I, I just don't like a zoning ordinance where it's not clear to an applicant. You know, an applicant would look at this and say, oh, it lets me do limited-share rental units in this district. And that applicant would have to know a lot, an awful lot more about zoning law, to know, to look at the lodging house line in the use table and see that they actually can't do it.
So could we not make that clear?
I think we could. I think we could.
I think we could write another, you know, we have some overlap here between the licensing statements, as we've pointed out, and the zoning. So why, and this would be another example of a clarification in the zoning that refers not just to a licensing agreement, but to another type of use. And that, you know, working out that language could, could make it clear to the applicant, because as Councilor Igerman has made, stated, this is foundational, this is where they'll go first. And so they get, this is, the zoning should highlight or bring to mind anything that could cause confusion for a property owner before they ever get to licensing. And if this is one of the issues, differentiating between a short-term rental and a lodging house, then we need a clear statement in there and add it, you know, to this list of A through F requirements, or give it a separate, give it a separate entry altogether.
Bonnie, couldn't we just, could we say something along the line of must comply with other items in the zoning ordinance, such as, and just state the code for that? And I guess, I guess Don's point with parking, I don't know if there's anything specific that they would have to refer to there with that. I don't know. If there are some circular, we could certainly put that in there.
So you're talking about pointers to specific places in the order, in the code, where they need to refer, so that we don't have to make it specific here?
Yeah, because if I were, if I were developing, if I were building a, you know, multifamily, I think, isn't there something in the zoning code that says you have to also comply with, you know, and it will state other sections of the zoning code, like as far as parking or height, or, you know, density, you know, there's other pieces that you'd have to look at if you're developing something. So you could, this could be along the same line. You could just say, must comply with, I don't know, Rick, if there were other circular, other references that you needed to reference, but we could certainly put that in there.
I guess part of my, you know, again, thinking about this, somebody looks at this and they say, okay, I can do a short-term rental use as an accessory use to a one-family, two-family, or multifamily use. It's an accessory use. But they, but if you get over three guests, it no longer becomes an accessory use, it becomes a principal lodging house use, which is, you know, you're bouncing around from different parts of the table. I just think it could be much clearer. I just don't think it's clear the way it is right now.
Well, I think we're all, we're, those of us who are speaking on this are, are in agreement that we need more clarity with the language. So before, we're going to make a recommendation for adopt, for the city council to adopt it, I think we ought to play with that language and get it the way we feel comfortable. And we know that city council has to look at licensing anyway, so that's not going to be approved overnight. So I think there is time for us to do some work and continue this public hearing so that we can clarify it in public through the same process, and then make our recommendation. Would that work for planning board members?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if we're going to continue this zoning discussion in a public hearing, I need to continue it to a date certain, and it has to be for another planning board meeting. And it's going to, I think, Councilor Shand, it should be a joint public hearing. What do you think? Because it is right now. It's the same hearing, so it would have to be that. Can we put this out to September, the second meeting in September, which for us?
The 16th.
Is it the 16th?
16th, yeah.
No, we can't do it on the 16th, I'm sorry. And the first meeting in September would be too short a turnaround. At the risk of dragging it out, I would suggest the first meeting in October.
That's the 7th.
Yeah. Do you have any problem with that at this point, from what you can imagine will be going on with licensing, Councilor Shand?
No.
Sorry. Counselor and Chair Sontag, I just wanted to note that, at least on the calendar, is presently listed on the city's website, the Newburyport License and Commission is meeting that night. I don't know if there's any benefit to having Craig Holt there that night, but just wanted to note that, if you're noticed.
No, we're not going to be discussing licensing. We're going to be discussing the zoning ordinance.
And this will give folks time to actually go and read the licensing part. So when we come back on the 7th, maybe there won't be as much confusion.
Right. And you may have already had a licensing, or they may have already had a licensing public hearing. I don't know if that'll be open before then. It gets a little circular, as I think through it. But since we're not ready to recommend the language that's here right now, this is the best I can do for you, without rushing it to have it done sooner. So I'd like to have a motion to continue this public hearing on the part of the planning board to October 7th. One of you, please?
I'll second.
Okay, so Alden will make the motion. Okay, so Alden will make the motion, Rick will second. Is there any further discussion on the planning board? All right, I need to call Lowell. Alden Clark?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. So this public hearing on the zoning amendment will be continued to October 7th.
All right, so as far as planning and development goes, I'll take a motion to continue this discussion jointly with our organization, our planning group, until October the 7th.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess I seconded that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Just a point of order, may I ask a question? Was there any consideration of having a joint meeting with our committee with the licensing committee?
Yes.
Or is that, okay?
I spoke to Joe earlier today. That is a consideration for us to have in September.
Okay, that would be good.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so to let the planning board get on with the rest of their meeting, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you, Chair Sontag. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
And thank you, Chair Shand, and all counselors who have been here. We appreciate your participation, as well as members of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on our agenda, like I said, the minor site plan review for Zero Parker Street has requested a continuance to September 2nd. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? A motion to continue.
So moved.
Okay, MJ, second, please.
Second.
Tanya, did I hear you?
Yep.
Okay. And I'll take a vote on that. Alden?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And me, yes. Approval not required, 57 Low Street. We'll turn it over to you, Andy, to walk us through that.
Sure, thank you. So just, it's a real simple map, a real simple concept of what's happening here. I thought I'd just show you the arrow photograph for context. The board routinely reviews and is required by statute to endorse approval not required plans. In this case, what the approval not required plan for is to take, this is the National Guard property here. And for those of you who've been following the news and community activities, you know that the mayor and youth services director have been looking at them for some time at acquiring a piece of land here for the youth services program to relocate to with a new facility. And although that is a whole discussion that requires the council to discuss, because it would require bonding for construction, and that's a larger discussion, we have been doing a feasibility study on the site. Irrespective of whether youth services goes there, though, the city has an opportunity, and I think the mayor and others would agree, we have a good price essentially to buy this land, because we buy it at a miserable rate as compared to the private sector. So there's a benefit for us to acquire this property regardless of whether it's used for youth services. I know, you know, there are other cities departments that have needs, like the Parks Department and others. So at any rate, what is happening here is the mayor had engaged in discussions with them for quite a while ago, the National Guard. And that had filtered through to the Department of Capital Asset Management, DCAM, from the state. And what we're doing here is essentially breaking off a piece of the land. So this is the larger parcel that's highlighted here, the guard property. That's their main building right there. This is an old brick building that has been on the site, and those of you might have known, that's where we have kept our emergency management equipment, anyway, if not operations. And more recently, it's been used by the Parks Department for storage of equipment. So this A&R plan, which I'll just switch to the PDF version, it's a little bit harder to read, but I thought it'd be easier for you if you had that context. So this plan here is that parcel here with the long jog you see at the back. And then I'm just going to zoom in a little closer. And what you'll see is, this is the armory building right here, the main building and their parking area. Then this is actually the powderhouse, for those of you who are familiar with the site, this is the powderhouse, historic site, and the easement that goes around that. And the plan here was to basically acquire the parcel of the land here that's bounded. And so Lot A1 would be broken off. This plan, after endorsement by the planning board, would be held for a closing. The city council, the mayor and the city council still have to go through the process of appropriating the funds for the acquisition and transferring those for a closing. But this A&R plan would be used in that closing to reference the new parcel that would then become the city's Lot A1. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I believe the plan is eligible for endorsement and ask for that, and that way we can have that ready for the closing, if and when that arrives.
Hey, Andy, this is Don. I understand it may not be part of the A&R, but would I be correct in assuming if Phase 1 has been performed and was turned out negative?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, so the Phase 1 was done. It's actually, we're engaged with the Phase 2 part of it right now. The Phase 1, they suggested, the Phase 1 study, by the way, Don's familiar with some of the details of this. The question there is whether or not the property has any history there, concerned that the property might have contamination in it. So there's a review of records and things like that, without necessarily doing investigation into the soil. So the Phase 1 assessment that was done by the LSP, and we worked through the regional planning agency, had determined that there wasn't any reason to believe that there'd be a significant risk of contaminants in the ground, based on the history of the property, available environmental records and so forth. What they did recommend was that we do testing of a few miscellaneous items inside the building, so lead and asbestos, for instance, just to get a sense if there's an order of magnitude for that, any kind of abatement we'd have to do for that if we were to demolish or reuse the building that's there today. So they recommended that task, and that's what we're trying to get squared away right now, just so we have essentially an order of magnitude. So weighed against the low acquisition cost for the property, if you add to that any, you know, abatement costs there or placeholder we might want to hold for that type of work, if any work's going to be done on the building in the near term, then you'd have an idea as to how much value that that building is worth to us. So yes, we did do the Phase 1 and the Phase 2, we're completing what the LSP had recommended right now.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll take a motion to approve the A&R.
This is Tom. I'll second that.
Okay, so Don makes the motion, Tanya seconds. Any further discussion? Excuse me. All right, I'll take a roll call on it. Alden?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. So that's approved. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for August 5th. Rick and I and Don have looked at it, so the motion would be for approval of the minutes as amended.
All right, you know what, Bonnie, I actually had changes and I didn't send them. Yeah, do you want me to, I didn't know if I was supposed to send them or if I should say them.
No, 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 no. What we're going to do is going to take the motion and a second, then we'll have discussion, and that's when you add it in.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion first.
I'll make a motion.
Good. All right. And a second, please.
Second.
Rick? And discussion. Tanya, what would you like to comment on?
Okay, so I had just some changes, and I don't know if it's easy, is it easier for me to send those comments, or should I read them out?
Well, if they're, you could read them and then send them to Linda.
Okay. All right, I'm just sorry, I thought I had them, they're not pulling up. I'm just pulling them up now, just having some technical difficulty. So let me see. So it was, I mean, the fact that she's, they're basically in my comments, so let me see. On page, sorry. Page 9, last paragraph, where it says Tanya Hartford had some technical issues. I don't know that we need to keep that in there. I was basically just saying I had some technical issues and might have missed some of the questions, so we can just take that out, or we can say Tanya had some technical issues and might have missed some of the questions from other members. Apologizing in advance for repeating, so I have that in there. I just had some minor changes to some of the wording. Do you want me to go through those in detail?
Only if you think they're significant and people might need to know them.
No, I don't think so. It was just more some minor tweaking on sort of just some of the language and some of, taking out some of the "I wondered" as opposed to, you know, just that piece.
Okay.
And then the sentence saying that I felt like something was weird, it was more just that I thought that it was out of scale. And that's on the next page, on paragraph 2. And then, let's see, so the next page, on page 10, regarding, it was, it's in the paragraph where I was talking about parking, so that's paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4. I just, the idea would be that I knew that reducing the parking and moving some offsite would require a special permit, not a redesign. It would be a redesign, but it also would require another permit. And so that's what I was trying to say in that.
Good. That's the kind of clarification that's really useful. Thank you.
That, I think, is important. And then the other piece is that, that my thought on that was that it was, that if there was, they were trying to put too much parking on the site to meet the zoning requirements. And that's what I was trying to say, too. So I just clarified those two sentences there. And then in the conversation on 6C, page 15, I was, I think I might have referred to, this is paragraph 2 on page 16, I was talking about affordable housing, and I was, I might have referred to it as affordable housing with a little A, which might, which doesn't really make sense to a lot of, so I just clarified saying affordable not necessarily meaning income-restricted but lower-cost units. So I just, I didn't, I might not have said that, so I just put it as sort of a clarification in there of what I meant about what I was meaning about more affordable units, so.
Yeah, that just made the meaning clearer.
Yep, yep. And I think even adding in there that it was affordable, little A, I don't know that that would be, that would be clearer, so. And I think that that was it. So I will send the redline edit out, and I hope that you guys have it. Does that work?
You can send that directly to Linda, and she'll add it in with her other, and I think at least my comments were all pretty minor and grammatical and other cleanup. But I don't know about Don and Rick, if you want to bring up any that you put in.
Mine were all pretty much the same, just clarification and some, just corrections.
Yeah.
Very mine, just a couple of typos, so nothing. Bonnie?
Okay, all right. Before we take the vote, I just want to say, Linda, this is 26 pages. It was absolutely phenomenal piece of work, so thank you. All right. I can't say that we'll promise not to talk as much in future meetings, but this was very, very good. I'm going to take the vote now on the amended minutes. Alden?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, the minutes are approved. We're back to an item that I believe we're dependent on Andy for. What's the Evergreen Pool discussion you'd like to hold?
Actually, I think Jennifer Blanchard's here. She's probably going to speak to that. It's an issue that she's been more in detail with in relationships to, I can give you a little background, but I think Jennifer's probably the best person to speak to it. Basically...
Okay, let's just go directly to Jennifer. Jennifer, are you there?
I'm here. Julia Godfertson, the Conservation Administrator, has actually been dealing most directly with this, because it is in fact related to the conservation permits. They're mentioned within the planning board permits, but the conservation permits address it specifically. We've had a number of people come in asking for pools, and there's been some question as to whether the lot coverage, as calculated in the original permits, contemplated that specifically. And we have gotten letters and the engineering reports, which Julia has scrutinized, and she feels comfortable that the analysis that was done did contemplate these pools, provided that they have permeable paver surrounds around them. And what likely will happen is there will be some language proposed coming before you that will be, that will explicitly state this. I know there's language about pool discharge in the various decisions and things like that, where we cannot be directly discharged into the adjacent wetlands, things like that. But there will likely be some language proposed to you as a minor amendment to talk about these pools and the fact that if they are installed, they need to have permeable pavers or at least not greater than a 5% increase of impervious material.
And Jennifer, I could add to that. I think part of the reason why, the mechanical reason why the applicant, the developer, would be before the planning board is because there needs to be a modification to the plans that were approved for that development, and because all those lots are part of the special permit there, there needs to be a revision to the plans to capture that. So what you're suggesting here essentially is the modification would be the condition allowing those pools, but subject to those standards.
Right. And I, one suggestion is that instead of actually modifying the plan, that a condition be written that allows them, so that each time someone wants to put a pool in, they don't need to return to the board.
Right.
But provided that the proper documentation is supplied to you to your comfort level, that this has been studied, that it could sort of be a blanket approval, or if there is some limit as to the number of lots that they're appropriate on, that you could make one review, eliminating the need for each individual homeowner to have to return.
Yeah, I would add to that, too, because I was part of some of the discussions with Julia and even with Lisa Mead about this. Lisa had represented the developer during permitting and does so now as well. There was some discussion about whether or not the, you know, the Conservation Commission and the planning board both have to revise the decisions. I think Lisa, at one point, had argued that the permits already account for pools to be placed on all these lots, but the plans don't actually reflect that. And so, well, the argument that she had posed was that the stormwater analysis had encapsulated enough extra area, say 5% more of what might be covered on a lot, to account for, say, a pool. And I'm not sure, frankly, whether that would be enough. But the argument there was, well, the stormwater analysis accounted for more impervious surface, therefore pools are not a problem. And, you know, the feedback that I gave, and I think that Julia has given, is that that needs to go back to the commission, it needs to go back to the planning board. It doesn't necessarily mean that the planning board would have come to a different conclusion, but if the planning board was looking at this whole development of, you know, 38, almost 40 lots over the city's water supply, with their, you know, in a low-lying area, essentially in a bathtub, would there be any concern about having 40, you know, almost 40 new pools in there as part of that development scheme, or would the planning board or the water department want to limit that in some way? So, you know, our suggestion here, I think, was that the proper way of handling that would be for the applicant to come back and ask the planning board to modify the original decision to make it clear that those are allowed, whereas right now, it certainly is not clear that they're allowed. You know, if someone wants to debate some sort of ambiguity, that's one thing, but the plans certainly do not reflect that.
So if I hear both of you correctly, if or when a request for a minor modification to the original decision comes through the planning board, we would make it in conjunction with advice from the Conservation Commission?
It is my understanding that it is going to be placed first on one of their upcoming agendas, and then, yes, it would have, you would have their feedback, their recommendation at the time that you would be reviewing it.
Great. Are there any other questions from planning board members at this time that might guide the direction? Are there any other questions from planning board members at this time that might guide the direction of this before it hits us?
I just have one. Go ahead, MJ.
Well, mine was, mine was actually just remembering the discussion about pools. And I thought when we were discussing this, one of the comments was about fences. And I thought we were limiting fences and I can't remember the limitation within this development. But I just remember the two being discussed together because obviously when you have a pool, you have to impose it.
Fences are not allowed within the front yard sap acts. They're only allowed in rear, reared and side yards. So, but pools are not allowed, without a variance, pools are not allowed in front yards within the city. So they, there is a consistency there.
That was my only comment.
My comment was, I guess Julia had scrutinized the calculations and I just wanted to confirm with respect to whatever percentage overage that that, that actually has been looked at by our engineer. Because in the past, there's always been going back and forth and perhaps they're minutia, whatever. But I surely would have, I would feel better if Phil Christensen would confirm that, yes, you can put X percent on each lot and there'll be no impact to the wetlands or whatever. Basically the stormwater calculations. And I don't know, Andy, are we able to say that?
Yeah, it sounds to me like what you're suggesting is, and I would agree. I think it's probably the proper way of handling something like this is to have the information that comes in from the developer peer reviewed by the city's engineer, Phil Christensen. The developer is obligated to keep the peer review account open and replenished during the development period so that you can have those types of reviews. So I would assume that the conservation commission would want to have, I don't know whether it's the city engineer that they were expecting to review it or Phil, who typically does a review for both the planning board and CONCOM during permitting. But in either case, I think it makes sense to have an engineer representing the city take a look at that analysis to see if at least, if it seems logical. You know, even without drilling down into all the details, at least if it seems logical that it will not have an impact. Because again, that is a, you know, all 38 lots might be a fair amount of impervious surface.
Just to, we have been looping in John Eric White, the city engineer, in the preliminary conversations. But I concur that it's a reasonable notion that it be peer reviewed as well.
Okay. Anything else you need from us at this time on this? Or is this just a heads up as far as Jennifer, you're concerned?
That does it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just for the office's purposes, I think Caitlin and I will just have to make a note when that request comes in and certainly we can communicate that to the development team now along with Jennifer. We'll want to make sure that the developer knows that they're going to have to await that review from our peer engineer before the planning board would be in a position to vote on it.
Good, well, that was a good idea to bring it in because now we've got a heads up on it and we've got the process worked out. Okay. Potential zoning amendments. We could work on language. I mean, we got to figure out how we're going to get this short-term rental zoning amendment ready for public review again. I would assume this would be the time or the part in the agenda that we would deal with it. But if you want time to think about it, we can definitely put it on the agenda for next time.
Could I, Bonnie, can I make a suggestion or just a comment that I think is relevant to whatever scheduling you might try to do? And this depends on how you want to relate with the city council members and coordinate with them. But I did receive some feedback from Council Joe Devlin, who wasn't at tonight's meeting, but had some concerns that he felt a little bit that he'd been cut out of the process, that some of the other councils were working ahead on the drafts. My only concern there, I guess, is that if the, Joe has explicitly said, as I understand it, that he wanted to meet in person and because we, I'm not convinced frankly that that will be possible in September, although I think that was suggested earlier tonight. I'm not sure that that will be possible at that point and it may be further out than that. It might be worth trying to confirm with Heather or whoever other counselors, if there's going to be follow-up with the council at least, whether or not there's any desire to meet with the licenses and permits committee of the city council as part of that discussion, just so that everybody's in a loop and there isn't something that's been worked out that then goes back to the drawing board again when it goes to the other committee.
Well, I understand that and we're always open for, you know, further discussion. But I think given the conversation tonight, planning board members, we need to get our act together on this and what we would propose going forward. And that would be open for discussion with licensing and permits and of course, the next joint public hearing. But I don't want to try to craft, whatever we decide to craft, I'm not even going to say anything more about it at this point, in a joint public hearing or any kind of a hearing with counselors and, you know, a joint public hearing. Let me just call it that. This is homework. This is a homework assignment, which means that it's just proposed language that at least planning board members have some consensus around. And then it goes back out to whatever the next round of discussion is before or at the joint public hearing that we set for tonight. Does that make it clear?
Yeah, quick question, Bonnie. My sense was that I didn't think the sponsors thought they were going to make any changes because of tonight's discussion, but I'm not sure if that's the case. But are you suggesting that we would be able to do some work, make some changes and then put that back to them? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, it would be proposed language to deal with the concerns that we have. So it's clear to them where we stand because we only recommend. We do not have any final say in what this zoning amendment will actually come out as. That's what Council Igerman was referring to. They make the policy decisions. So it behooves us to have in, in that discussion, what we would like to see. And so we can make a recommendation with recommended language. What comes out of it from city council when they vote on it may or may not be the same thing. That's, that's how this process works. An amendment to the zoning code must be adopted by the city council. They're the final gatekeeper on that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, it does.
Yeah, it's sort of why I call this homework because it's a chance for us to work out some of the issues that we brought up, different members brought up tonight in light of everything we heard tonight. And that's why I think it's probably better to put it on the September 2nd agenda officially so that people can see that's what we're going to be discussing in case they want to sit on, in on the discussion. But nothing will be, we don't have the opportunity to carve anything in concrete. It would be proposed language changes to the zoning amendment when we come to the joint public hearing in October. Or as Andy suggests, there might be some other discussions going on in the meantime. And if we have anything ready for them, we're happy to share it with them. We're not going to hold on to it.
Bonnie, you know, with all the discussion we did have about it, we really had no discussion at all that I can remember about the basic policy issues. You know, so many people who spoke said they were opposed to this in residential districts. We didn't talk about that at all. And I don't know when that's, we just talked about, at least I just talked about things that I saw as confusing or contradictory or in the wrong place. But we didn't even get into policy issues at all that I could, that I can remember. Do we want to have this in R1 or whatever? Do you think we're going to be doing that as part of our deliberations in September? Or do you think that we wait to get back to the combined meeting to talk about that?
Procedurally, I'm not quite sure because what we said we were going to work on were the issues that came up. And normally I'd say, yeah, we can discuss anything. We bring it forward as proposed changes for our recommendation. But I think I'll go to Andy on this and ask if we have to be very careful about what we do in a planning board meeting, even if we're planning to share it at the joint meeting.
Yeah, so obviously you can't meet as a quorum of the planning board, right? And if you create a subcommittee of some type, that's going to be, you know, the instructions that I've seen from legal counsel are that that should also be treated as, if that group then has a quorum, it's a meeting that needs to be posted. So I think, as you know, Bonnie, we had a couple of members, less than a quorum of the planning board, working as liaisons with the city council members, members of our staff, Craig Cole from the licensing commission to try to work through some of these issues. I guess me and my staff, we'd assume that perhaps circling back with that same working group would be a good way of trying to resolve some of these issues, you know, just as one format. I certainly would suggest trying to pull in Council Devlin because of his concern. But we defer to you on whatever works as far as, you know, groups. But I think you will want to make sure that if you're having a group that is a quorum, it's going to be posted as a public meeting.
That wasn't the question I asked. I thought I was asking the question, can we have this discussion in the next planning board meeting on the language that we told everybody at the joint public hearing tonight that we were concerned about and add to that any other discussion on policy issues? Or do we have to wait until the joint public hearing to have the policy decision, discussion?
Hey, sorry, can you clarify when you say policy? I mean, that this.
Well, we didn't respond, let's use Rick's example. We didn't even talk about as planning board members tonight. We didn't respond to whether or not it should be in the residential districts or not. So since that wasn't a topic of conversation and it wasn't something we said we were going to work on, but we did say we were going to work on the language about uses and subuses. So they know that we're going to come back with some ideas for that. It seems to me that if we talk about uses at the next planning board meeting out in the open, it's on our agenda, it's preparation for what we're going to say, which is the outcome of that, that discussion at the joint public hearing, that we can talk about uses. My question is, at that same planning board meeting, can we talk about something that wasn't responded to by planning board members tonight at this meeting?
Yes, yes, I don't think that's the issue actually. And I think the most applicable advice we've gotten from council is that essentially that whatever you discuss at that meeting, and it can range all over that, like you said, those topics, that you essentially, someone reiterate that as you reenter that joint public hearing to reiterate a little bit of what that dialogue was so that it's encapsulated somehow. And everybody who goes to the public hearing and has been tracking the main joint public hearing and how that's been continued has an idea about what that other discussion was.
Good, so it's open. We'll talk about, we can talk about anything we heard tonight at our next planning board meeting under other business for the short-term rental zoning proposal. That's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
Okay? And it's out in the open, people can listen. It's, it's all going to be reiterated or we would not have to go through the excruciating detail who said what about it until we got to a final result. But we will present whatever consensus we have. And if we have differences of opinion, we'll just have to present those. But whatever we talk about in a planning board meeting will be definitely shared at the joint public hearing. That goes without saying. I don't want a subcommittee of the planning board and I don't think we need to go into another working group with counselors on this. This is a, these are planning board members' input and discussion and ultimately hopefully consensus on language for the zoning amendment. Okay?
Bonnie, I have a question regarding the pass process. Would I be correct in assuming that you've had several meetings between the planning board and some members of the city council on the short-term rental unit? And, you know, you've discussed some of these items. I mean, you talked about policy decisions. To me, you know, these are the big, the big bullet items and then you can get into the weeds. And would I be correct assuming you may have glossed over them or spoke them briefly? But at the end of the day, city council sponsors wrote that zoning ordinance and what you have, what they wrote is what we have in front of us?
We had one meeting Rick and I attended. And yes, they finalized it with Andy's help and this is what we have. This is the second iteration of the short-term rental units zoning amendment.
Thank you.
Anything else on, on this one anyway? We also have that night, just to confirm with Don and Tanya. You're going to get back to us with some research and thinking you've done on 6C, right? September 2nd, I think that was on the agenda as well.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Okay, so we will have those two discussions in our next meeting. All right, I'm looking at the agenda. Any other updates, Andy?
No, thank you.
Is there anything from any of the planning board members? Like maybe a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Pick that one.
Right over it. Just tell Linda who did what.
Don and Tanya. You pick which one goes first, one second.
And I'll do a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Tanya? Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Night, all.
You guys.
Thanks, goodnight.